So, first of all, changes or additions to the agenda, we have one change. And we are actually going to make the seven B, which is the one B, two B, is actually going to be voted on tonight. It will be an action item. Provided the board approves that. We will need a motion to make that change.
I move that the board approve the agenda change as presented.
I'll second it.
Move and second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda has changed. Okay, um, anything you can do with that heat?
Yeah, bring it up.
That was a bad question. Yeah, alright. Okay, so then, item four, consent agenda.
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Move and second it. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, no personnel at five? Public comment? I just have one. This meeting is going to move rather rapidly, so we might as well have that right now. Uh, Debbie?
Yes, I just wanna, um, again, as the last board meeting, that I really want our school to consider being a one B school. It's true, our family, our school is small. We keep score for a reason. Kids like to play, but we also like to play to win, and we want to give our kids the best advantage. And I do believe our kids will have the best advantage and create the more pride in the school, um, and go one B. I don't think we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, there's no other community input, unless somebody like would say something right now? Give you that opportunity? No takers? Okay. Alright, we're gonna move on to unfinished business. Item seven, A. Prove construction of batting cage at NACO Rogers Park.
I move the board approve Booster Club to construct a batting cage at Lions Park.
I'll second it.
Move and second it. Discussion.
We'll discuss for a month.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Alright, um, item B, one B, two B.
I move that the board approve the, um, it's not downgrade, but move, uh, moving the school to the one B league.
I'd like to add to that motion.
Okay.
I'd make it, we move to one B and be as independent. We'll be telling anybody. Not throwing any lead.
Um, I actually think that it might be a little bit early to add to that. I would actually like to have the AD here and to actually, I think if we make this move right now, that'll give us time down the road to address the different options as far as independent or not.
So, the reason they're saying this is because if you join, there's no league to join because they all, all building, North River and all them are independent already. And the only league that you would have to be able to draw, uh, join would be the league of Santa Cruz and Longview, that league up there, they said that sure they'd like to have us. Now, this is coming from their, from the district meetings that I've been, that was the district secretary's recommendation that we do it this way. That way we could turn around and play Waco, South Bend, or Raymond, and I talked to South Bend, uh, they right there, and they said they could play us. But they said it'd be crazy for Valley and Raymond not to play us either because they draw the bigger crowd when they sell and they do all the closer games. So that's why you wanna go independent, we could even play Warranton, Napo, and everything else, and we still would be eligible to play into a tournament.
Okay.
And when we get done after our twenty games, we'd go have that opportunity. But if you join, don't go independent, then I guess the district or whatever that puts your league, only league is available.
So are you saying that that locks down our option? Uh, if we, if we move on this as a, as an action item, and we declare ourselves independent, is that gonna lock us down so that we can't necessarily go to some, I mean, a different uh...
Well, we haven't decided one B or one two B.
Right, exactly.
First, and then whether you do it as a one B independent, that would give us the option to play, get the games wherever we wanna get them, to play it.
Right. But what I'm saying is, alright, yeah, we're going to move to one B, but with your independent. Alright, so let's, uh, I think we're getting a little bit off here, so, you know, we need a motion, and then we need to discuss it. Once there's a motion, it's been seconded.
Yeah, I'll second it.
So, okay, so let's, let's restate the motion. The motion is that, and, and we gotta realize that really we're a one B right now, because we haven't clarified that we are a two B. So really, we're just actually making the statement that we're going to stay at one B, that's the motion. Okay, so it's not really that we're moving, because unless we make the change from one, you know, if we make the change to two B, we're moving.
Right.
Otherwise, we're just staying one B.
Right.
So that's kinda what the motion needs to say, the way I would think.
Um, I, maybe we don't need that independent, but it never, what we file for, we are gonna have to do it. So what I would just try to get this already put in place, so when they send it in, that they send, okay, we want to be, we want to be independent.
Alright, so I think what we need to do is we've, we've basically got the motion, we've got a second, discussion is open, and is Russ on his way? Okay, so what I'd actually like to do is get Russ in here and kinda getting updated as to where the board is right now while the action item is on the table. And maybe get a little bit of his thoughts, he is the AD. Um, you know, in the meantime, if any of the coaches here that are involved have any input to the independent part of it, um, you know, anything that would help the board in this decision, I guess I would entertain that.
Yeah.
Okay, Lisa's got something to say.
I'll do a little filler until Russ comes, but there really are two step decisions, and we don't have to decide that independent thing yet. I mean, that's something that could be explored further and look at next month, um, you know, as far as that's a little, because we don't know yet what other schools are going to opt up or stay in their natural positions. So it might be a little, you know, early to make that declaration, not knowing what the other teams, you know, how they're going to divide out.
Yeah, I really don't know until, a lot of teams are not gonna know until they get the cutoffs, friends, what the range is gonna be, before they know whether they're going up or down.
Right.
Okay, so Russ, no, I'm quickly on the spot, anyway. The board has an action, uh, motion on the table to remain one B, because really, if we don't say that we're two B, that's what we are, correct?
Say that again.
Alright, the board is, has an action, uh, motion on the table to basically be one B.
Okay.
It's seconded, we're in the discussion phase of this right now. So what I would like is, now Gilbert also said that we probably should clarify or classify ourselves as a independent right now, but I'm not so sure that we should do that right now. I guess I would like to have your input on that.
Well, we've got a lot of things in the mix still going on, and we really won't know until the twenty-second for sure about where everything is.
Twenty-second of this month?
Yes.
Okay.
That being said, um, we have, we have an option on November eighth to, to opt up or just kinda stay out and say we'll, we'll go where we're supposed to go. But that's really a preliminary. The only thing that really wanted to know then was the number of opt-ups and states. So we really don't have to decide until January seventh, deadline date, for any kind of decision about what classification you'd like to be.
Okay.
Now, that, that being said, also, we're, we're taking a look at multiple options about, you know, we're starting to take a look at a, either an amendment or a petition to the WIA executive board to go one B and opt up in one sport, football, state level men. So that's a mix that we will not know, we won't have a decision on until December, when the executive board meets, and when the amendments are taken.
Okay, so I guess the board's question to you then, if I guess I'm speaking for everyone here, is whether we really need to be independent right now or not, would you?
I, I would ask the board that you don't pigeonhole us and, and don't, don't put us into something that we can't get out of, because there may be something that really is, is a good deal, and I don't wanna have to be pigeonholed into an independence. If you go one B, that's fine, but just say then we'll take a look at our options from then on out. I would rather not put us into an independent situation yet.
Okay.
And I think there's still hope for me that either a multi-classification league can be formed, or we can just rejoin up with the civic two B league as a one B member and, and be in that venue, state.
Okay.
According, according to what I hear from the district, you say that there is a, a motion that's supposed to be, for having, you having a choice to opt in up in one sport. So that's supposed to be in there. Now, I have a meeting Thursday, a district meeting, and I got a meeting Thursday night with the WI director. I'll know more what's going on after that meeting with the WI director than I could say now, but everything else, what I was just, what I've been learning so far.
Just to piggyback on what Gil is saying, I've been in contact with a couple of members of the WI executive board. Um, like, to, to be truthful, it doesn't look hopeful for the executive board to grant schools to opt up in one sport. They've been, they've been pretty reluctant to do that. However, we were encouraged to go the amendment route, which would find some support on Eastside Mountains as well as in our district and District Three. So that's a possibility.
I would just say this is, we're premature for doing anything today. Seems to me.
We're not gonna stay in. As they see, we aren't, uh, independent out and decide, I guess, uh...
It's basically what we are, we don't, you know, clarify anything at all. So it's basically before making a decision at this point, since there is an action item, a motion on the table, either gets voted in or out. Because we can't move backwards from here, we're gonna take this to a vote. Alright, so is there any further discussion from the board? Anybody else have any other input? Marilyn, are you clear on the, uh, motion? Okay. Alright, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Russ. Okay, um, item eight, this is a spring surplus of nineteen ninety-four homeless plus of two hundred and forty whatever miles. Yeah?
I move that the board approve the surplus of nineteen ninety-four homeless plus.
I'll second it. Move and second it. Discussion? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Business office report.
Uh, can we do that a little bit?
Yeah, we can, we can. We can go with the principal's report.
I'm just, I'm just clicking. John's at a training today and tomorrow with her, it's like a CBA road show, we go out and talk about the program. So he's up here. Hopefully you can see this, this little small print, um, just for the last three months, um, fun balance. Now, what we need to remember, because this is a lot higher than it usually is, we're usually in the four hundreds, is that the state sent down money through the treasury, inadvertently, I guess, you know, a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars and change. We don't have the bond in place, they shouldn't have given us the money. They won't take it back until they make their corrections in January. So minus, I know. Uh, minus a hundred and thirty-three thousand from the six, twenty-two, six thirty-six. So, uh, just didn't mind besides that. Um, let's see if we can get out of this. So, it's all night. Nice to be finding in. So that's the business report. Okay, I'll go through. You don't have motions against. Uh, camp enrollment is up quite a bit this month, we're hovering around eighty, up to eighty-nine at this time. I have a very short presentation on test scores. Each month we've taken a different, uh, school to talk about test scores, so I'll go through these quickly. These are five, six-year trends, basically since I've been there, tracking these. And these are state tests required for graduation. Now, it's called the HISB, which is what you call a... So this is our five-year trend line, this is the number of tenth graders or higher who pass the state test in reading. So we have a pretty positive growth line in that subject. Writing, it's even better. And as you know, there's sometimes some bad news that follows the good news. Math was clicking along pretty well, and we had a poor performance this year with our math scores. We had six students take the test, none of them passed the algebra two this year. The state's kinda toying with whether or not they're going to require one year of math or two years of math, and so, um, our second year score moved, or terrible, I guess you could say. Something to consider in that, I'll say that actually in the next slide. These are our science scores, and again, these are tenth grade, uh, test required for graduation. Actually, our last year, seventy-three, essentially, we were taught by the state, uh, this is a very good, very strong area for us in science. Just kinda some other data about the camp. We can see that over time, the average length of residence days with us has increased pretty dramatically. Last year it was sixty-nine point nine days, actually, I should've said seventy, which is just, it continues to drop every year. And that's total days in the facility, that's weekends, holidays, sick days. I'm not making an excuse for the scores because our reading and writing are, are very good, our math or not, but those are the, um, scenarios for that. So, I don't know if there's any questions, just kinda the quick synopsis. It's a challenge every year because our kids are, you know, in and out, in and out, haven't been in school for a couple of years to get them, but, you know, we've gotta find a better way. Math wasn't really going on a nice upward trend, and then it's like, ugh, nobody passed this year. I don't have the answer for an evil proportion. Okay, well, there's no questions. I've asked Justin to come talk about our GEAR Up program. It's a program we've had here for the last several years, um, a lot of very good opportunities for our kids, and I'm not sure everyone's really aware of that program, so I asked him to come and talk to you about that a little bit, so that's...
Great. So, again, it asks me to give a quick overview of the GEAR Up program. So a good place to start is GEAR Up is an acronym. It stands for Gain Early Awareness and Readiness for Undergraduate Programs. So, simply stated, it's about increasing awareness and readiness and access to higher education for all students, and, um, specifically for students who are underrepresented in the college population. So some logistics, it's better to fund it. Um, we serve seventy-five to eighty kids per year in grade seven to twelve. Um, what this grant translates to for us is we receive anywhere from fifty, sixty thousand dollars each year, provide a variety of different activities, services, resources. Thirty to sixty percent of that has to be matched by the school, so a couple of years ago, sixteen, we reduced to fifty last year, thirty percent this year. Typically, that's satisfied through anything that we provide to GEAR Up kids, regular rent loans or SNAP. A lot of my time with the GEAR Up kids qualifies for that. And just to be aware of that it's something that's administered through Washington, which is the chief council, which used to be called Higher Education Committee before. So again, this is our seventh year participation. The first four years, we were a cohort school, which meant that we could only provide the services and resources to a single grade. Now's the past two thousand and eleven. Three years ago, we shifted to a priority model, which has allowed us to expand services to any eligible kids in grade seven through twelve. And I'll, you know, kinda comment on that in a minute. Um, and what's required of us is that we provide a variety of different specific programs and activities, but we have to submit a detailed budget, work plan each year, be approved, and then, as you can imagine, then the program, there's a fair amount of data entry documentation, something like that. So, alright. So some of the academic resources in support, two of the biggest resources are that we're able to partially fund, Shirley Miller, who spends half of her day in CBA, half of the day handling some of the, uh, data reporting, but also serving kids. Weezy Glenn, who's somebody that's worked for us for years, um, through the LAP program, she's a parent educator, we're able to extend her day. So those are two of the biggest things that we've done. We've been able to expand academic support in and out of the school day to kids that previously would not have received that, so kids that would've been LAP eligible before were not eligible for LAP are able to get services through GEAR Up. We don't have personal tutoring. Um, I mentioned monitoring and communication, so Shirley Wee helped track the kids' grades and the, we give teachers, myself, sometimes we make better contacts, the teachers or myself, you know, I have time for. A couple of the whole print things, we're able to purchase school supplies. So we have more and more kids that honestly can't afford some of the school supplies that they need in class, they come to my office to get those. We purchase laptop computers, the kids can check out these for college applications, financial aid, scholarship things. Um, and then on occasion, we've used it to fund independent study opportunities that we did not get offered in the GEAR Up program. Lastly, some of the college and career exploration activities, we've conducted some parent information events, um, GEAR Up provides professional development for staff. We've been able to send students to different student leadership, um, seminars, so we were able to send a couple of kids last year to Gonzaga to both explore campus, but also engage in leadership training. Couple of kids to UW last year, so provide opportunities for kids that they wouldn't otherwise access. Variety of classroom activities, some people to come and talk with the kids, some tests that we wouldn't be able to afford without GEAR Up. So like those tests, I won't bore you with the details, but there's an A grade test, a ten grade test that we are able to offer. Um, we take it off our juniors the last three years over the class, I've been taking a college placement test, so that when they enter their senior year, they know where they're at and what they need to get off. One of the best things we've provided throughout the seven years for college trips, so case you're just from this rural area that wouldn't otherwise get a chance to visit, you know, college campuses around the state, we go and spend a couple nights, see all the eastside schools, Seattle, Villanueva. And it's not just four-year colleges, we do this with mainly technical colleges. And then there's some financial and scholarship things that we're able to support families with. And my final comment, you know, one of the reasons we chose the priority model, it's a lot more work for everybody involved, and it allowed us to kinda serve more kids, and the vast majority of the things that we provide for the GEAR Up eligible kids, we provide for all students. So one of the things I don't know that I talked about, that, you know, GEAR Up requires a target, we prioritize kids that might have different types of dismanages first, but we made every effort to make sure that on the college trips, college placement test, all the assessments, we've been, the regular education program's been really good about funding, you know, those same things for everyone else. So, so that's it, um, in a nutshell. Anybody have some questions? Would you like? Yes?
Um, you know, there's a lot of discussion these days about the value of college education and the cost associated with it. Do you get into that? And does this program even discuss that concept of, is it worth it? Or, that matter, exactly what is it gonna cost, and if you take out the loans, which are readily available unfortunately, um, have you thought about it? I mean, that kinda thing?
Yeah, and that's a good question. Uh, one of the requirements of this is they actually provide a financial literacy curriculum that we, uh, financial literacy curriculum, where we talk to the kids at A three about budgeting, finances, college costs, um, some of the parent information events, we've talked a little bit about, or a lot about college costs and, you know, more and more. I encourage families that they've least been undecided of what they wanna do in the future, um, even if you're going four-year out, to really consider two-year college first, to save considerably, so, so yeah. For the local vocational technical options as well.
Does the GEAR Up also support the community colleges and, I mean, they would take trips to those?
Could some of the trips be more, you know, there needs to be a little more visiting of four-year colleges because they're not as accessible, but yeah, we've been that particular community medical colleges in those trips too.
Have you ever looked at once a bit of dream of a four-year college and a grade school, which, which would be better, because kids have no idea what they, if they wanna do, something like middle grade or upper grade?
One of the things I like to emphasize with kids is not everybody goes to a four-year college, in fact, most people not, and then the vast majority of those that completed a vocational or technical degree two years or more, they're just as much divorced, people with bachelor's degrees and professional degrees. So we really do try to emphasize that, um, and still that myth that everybody has to go to four-year up.
Okay, so we touched on that already. Karen?
Um, so we have other states, I'm, um, I'm, I'm there, and, um, and we honor fifteen deaths from the community, and so that is, uh, pretend to be by...
Speak up a little bit, Amy. Yeah. I don't know if people back there can hear me. I can hear you. Sorry.
Okay, um, and then, I could be going to a workshop tomorrow, a homeless, it's in Kennedy and Bento, another, um, federal programs, a combination, where we provide support for those children who are identified as homeless. I'm not sure if you're aware, but homeless, um, can apply to, say, a family choosing and choosing to live in a staying, so, you know, how sometimes a lot of family, grandparents, and then you'll have the children, and that's actually, um, qualifies as homeless. And so we have to make sure that we are providing all services across those families, those students who are, and we are, unfortunately, because the economy, um, facing some hard times, families are around here, and there's that. So we try to do, and we can provide for, 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 here. I know last year we received a, we received a substantial amount of money from a community donor, and so that is out there in the staff know that if, in fact, during student needs, that money is there for that purpose, because that is what the donor intended to be for those who don't have much, so, okay. And then, um, I'm going on the, the eleventh, um, T-CAP, the Teacher Principal Evaluation Program, the, the training that's in process for that, and the stage two training, so that'll be the second, uh, prior training this December. And we just concluded parent-teacher conferences last week. K-48 had the parent-teacher conferences where nine through twelve, you know, um, student lets, so the students actually communicated with their parents, uh, what they're doing, what their future plans are, and we've been doing this for, it's, it's been very successful, and draws the parents in to have the conversations, and it keeps them very effective. And one thing that I was, this was talking about, the test scores, and I mentioned, and Justin's heard this as well, is that the new, the new acronym out there is AMO. It used to be AYP, Additive Yearly Progress, which is what the federal government put out there, and now it's Annual Measurable, um, Objectives Outcomes, and what we found out is that while our kids have been doing well, we thought they were doing well, well, they have been doing well, but now, apparently, we're not needing the annual measurable, um, outcomes, objectives, because the, you were expected to make a certain gain each year, but when you start out up here, there's not a whole lot for it to go at. So, say, for example, um, our kids, and we're not certain why they're there, there's a bit complex formula, but they, um, they were scoring a hundred percent over the last couple of years, even in reading, but it's showing that we're at eighty percent, and that we shouldn't have been at eighty-four percent, but then if you look at our neighbors, they're expected to get to maybe sixty-five percent for their AMO, or maybe seventy percent for NACO, isn't expected to go eighty, eighty-four, eighty-seven, because we have been, um, way up. So it's interesting. Um, I guess we didn't need AMO this year.
So is there a funding cut because of that or something?
No, I was just saying that we didn't need it. However, our scores are much higher than the state. However, our scores are much higher than the state. And so, the state of Washington does not meet AMO, and neither have any other states in the country.
Government run program.
I, I think your camp will meet AMO in their math scores next year. One is, would you like, one percent?
Well, it's frustrating because we work so hard, and, um, and I think we are working hard and, you know, it's a different thing.
That we will keep working hard nonetheless.
Yeah, definitely. And, and another thing, my elementary teachers, we, they went to writing workshops, and they were astounded. The expectation that we would come and down through the common core, which we have been working on, is that at kindergarten level, children are expected to write several sentences, and they should be able to write, um, expository narrative type, um, sequence. And it's just amazing. And all the teachers are, are, I mean, which is historically, at kindergarten level, you were teaching letter sounds and spelling, you were doing phonetics, and now you are expected to teach them writing, 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 writing in front of the kids. It's kind of, it's, it's a little off.
Well, I did receive a good phone call today. Um, a while back, I applied for a Templeton grant to help offset the cost of our security system and the cameras and work on part two of the security system. And so, we were receiving twenty-five thousand dollars from the Templeton Foundation. Um, it had been recently passed away as a grad organization. So, there's been a little, um, shifting, but we should have the money by January. So, I was assured today that we would be getting that money, so that was a nice call at all. Um, each month, I try to show you the months before enrollment to kind of see, um, CBA has grown a fair amount, which is the bulk of, um, that change. And those are FTEs, our actual headcount is higher than that, but FTEs are how we are funded, so it kind of gives you, um, a picture of the last three months. I'll come to the recognition of the board members in a second, but Ford and I will be at the Wausau Conference in Bellevue starting on Thursday, and that goes through Sunday. Questions? Okay, I do, um, I do want to recognize our outgoing board members, um, tonight. Ed couldn't make it tonight, but I have a plaque for him as well, and just like to show the audience these. Jim Moulton made these in our shop class, and we have an engraving machine. So, what this actually is, is a gold plate with just black over it, it's solid black, and you engrave it out. So, we put these together for you gentlemen this evening. Um, first one is for Gilbert Hadia. And as you know, Gilbert has been a long time of the board member. I think he's been on two or three, um, since.
Yeah, several years.
Several years. Um, you were on the board when I was probably about three.
You were still in the school.
Way back in the day. And so, it says, "A celebration of Valley, School District number one five five. This award is presented to Gilbert Hadia for faithfully serving the district and donating countless hours for the benefit of our children." And when we say countless, we really mean countless. You know, it's not just the time you spend here in front of the board, but it's the time reading documents and researching and analyzing, wondering, why is that? And how can that be? And that's ridiculous. And, you know, a lot of the things that go on with that, it's listening to your constituents, gathering information. So, people don't really see the whole picture when they see, you know, hour and a half, two hours that we spend up here. There's a lot that goes into it, and I want to thank you for your time and recognize you with this plaque. And I bet Mary.
How many years, Gibbs? How many years?
Between eighteen and twenty, so that's all I can do.
That one's that long. And this one goes to Art Island. It says the same thing, so I won't, um, bore you with redundancy. But I would like to thank you, Art, for, you know, you provide a lot of different insights to the board. You know, you bring a, a different mindset, um, a critical mind, you ask a lot of questions, and I, you know, I support that. I think a lot of times, you know, and as you have mentioned, it does sort of become a, a rubber stamping process, and sometimes there isn't a lot of thought that goes into, why do we do what we do? And I think that goes with, um, people in new positions. You know, I've been in a couple of different schools, and I've brought that same attitude of, you know, why do we do that? That seems silly, that doesn't make sense. Why do we do that? And sometimes I was told, shut up, Nelson, that's just the way it is. And other times it was like, you know, I don't know why we do that, it doesn't make sense. Let's, let's consider another option. And so, I do want to thank you for that. I know it hasn't been a, a real long term that you've been on here, but I know as far as myself, it's caused me to think deeper and look at things differently, and I would like to thank you for that. So, just like. Okay.
Uh, you, um...
Yes, sir.
Okay, I am twelve, report to the reports, which are at the islands. Um, I'd like to welcome our new board members at this time. Um, since I won't be at the new board orientation, I did have four points that I'd like our new board members to try to remember when they get on the board. Um, number one, board has no room for personal vendettas or personal agendas. Uh, number two, your job is to act, be an advocate and a voice for the school and the students, and not a voice for the people. Uh, three, you really need to do what is best for our kids, even though public sentiment may be unfavorable. And your main job is to do school business and not be in the school's business unless you have a superintendent's or a principal's credentials or a degree of accounting. I suggest leaving the running of the school to the professionals. Now, I'll be submitting my resignation at the end of this meeting, and the reason I'm submitting my resignation is I cannot sit at the same table with two of the incoming board members and pretend that I am happy to do business as usual. Based on their checkered past and dealing with board and school issues, I find I have absolute contempt for their processes, their methods and attitudes towards the school, the board, and the district, and the administration. I therefore resign my position effective at the closure of this meeting. It's been real, it's been fun, but it hasn't been real fun. Any questions?
I think that pretty much sums it up for most.
Well, I've already stated that I'm going to be a, I got a district board meeting Thursday at ten, and then I got a meeting with W I director at six, thirteen hours. I hope to be able to inform you guys at the conference what come out of the W I meeting with COVIDs, and then we'll all, we'll all report. According to what last article I got from the district secretary, it said there is amendment to where the school has chosen to opt up for. Now, I don't know what the executive board or anybody else, what I'm going to do, but I'll have, I'm going to ask the district secretary when I have a meeting Thursday to find out what's, what really would happen on that, so we'll have more of an idea of what's going on. And I want to congratulate you two that are, to that Josh ain't here and I'm here. I'd like to remember in their lecture. And I've been on this board, I've worked with five, certainly ten of us, and Lisa would have been six, and I think Lisa's done a good job, and I like everything that she's done so far. I think she's, would be a fool to keep as a candidate, she's a board member, so we'd be doing that. I even put up one person named against the wall over there that when I was on the board earlier, she was kind of rowdy at times.
You put up a dude, y'all.
She was good. But I've enjoyed, I've been many years on the board. I enjoy sports, I've been very personal, I've been in this W I community over ten years, so I've had, dealing with sports for a lot of years. And I thank you, gentlemen, I'm glad to see, sorry to see you through it almost. I'm glad you're involved and stable, that's the way it goes, the way it goes.
Anything, Art?
Well, I've been up here about one thirty-ish amount of time, but, uh, Phil Maxi has been here, and so, uh, and yet, I, I, as the new guy on the block, um, and unknown as I have been to most of the people here, it's, uh, it's been interesting to, to see the momentum of the school. Um, I was introduced to it by the longtime champion of the school, Pearl Hall, who probably is as much of a fan of the school as anyone could be, and he's been here for so long. It's a fixture, by the way, he's, he's feeling a little bit better, but I don't think he's going to be moving back to his house, which is kind of sad. But anyway, uh, I've enjoyed, uh, working with the board, uh, even though for the most part, uh, it was a four-on-one decision on a lot of issues, um, at least I raised the questions. I would like to think that the board is going to be, uh, attempting to find out, uh, why they're doing things or why they're being held to do things, uh, for the benefit of the kids and for the benefit of the teachers, that, uh, it seems that more and more direction is coming from the federal government and the, and the state government, it's probably going to get worse. And so, we're going to have to, um, uh, deal with that, and I, I don't know how a board's going to deal with it. I don't know if the board has the power to deal with it, other than kind of hit around the edges. Uh, the fact that we're in a remote area actually is nice, because, uh, they don't even know we're here sometimes up in Olympia, but, um, it's just too bad, in my estimation, that we don't have more control. Way back when, when we had one, one-room school, uh, houses, I mean, you know, the community would think long and hard about who they'd hire as the teacher, and the teacher would be well-known, and the students were extremely, uh, disciplined and, and learned. It's worked from that to where the, the curriculum is, is sort of dictated, and it's, it's, um, you don't have the, the authority that, that teachers once had, I don't think, and they have so many reports to make, especially the, the principals, and have so many reports to make to this, to the, uh, state, that it takes so much time away from the, the students, and I hate to see it. I've asked for the, the idea of finding out from some graduates as to really, what do they feel about going to school there, and I still think that would be worthwhile to find out. Um, I got the benefit of talking to some, and believe me, they, once they graduated, they're a little bit more, uh, objective about what they learned and what they didn't learn here. Most of them enjoyed it. I mean, it's, it's hard not to enjoy high school and, and junior high and elementary school, when you have friends and so forth, but as to whether it has been worthwhile, well, I think that it'd be worthwhile to find out really what they do think, because especially the ones that have just been here, been gone for, say, five years. Not that many of them really to find out, it'd be easy to find out, and get some, get some feedback to find out if there's something that we can't do as a board and, uh, as a school. So, these are the kind of questions I'd like to see the board get into at some point. Um, I'll follow it from afar, but it's been enjoyable.
Thank you, Art. Um, for myself, I'm, I'm not going anywhere anytime soon, I don't think. Um, I do want to thank, uh, board members that are here for the time that you put up the board, you voted me as your chairman, and hopefully I've filled that spot as you expected. Um, we've, we've dealt with some tough issues, okay? It's not been easy, and I got to tell you, it's not been fun. If you think it's fun, then, yeah, try it sometime. Um, so I appreciate the time and the patience that you've, uh, shown me and, and helped me through some of this stuff too. We're always learning as we go. I learned probably more in the last two years about being a board member than I ever thought that I really need to, you know, certainly. Uh, for myself, I'm actually looking forward to working with the new board very much. I think the new board can actually, um, offer a lot to the school. Um, it's, you know, it'll be important for us to, uh, stay focused, and I think we're going to have some important, um, issues to deal with, and I, I, I think that we're going to be very capable of that, so, uh, I am looking very forward to it, so. And I will be to the Wausau Conference, uh, Thursday about midday, I guess, so that's what I was really saying. Anyway, that's all I have to say, thank you, and, um, this time I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. I'll second that.
You move to second, those who say they are.
I, yes. You adjourn.